With us this afternoon, this is actually the second time this group has met. We had a meeting this morning to canvass the election for the presidential preference primary, and we're meeting now for our work session. This is a little earlier than we normally meet, so we, because we figured we will have a fair amount to talk about. I'm going to turn it over to Sarah to give us some of the rules of the game and then set us off.
Thank you, commissioners. This is a work session on the conditional use permit for the Kansas Sky Center. Our work sessions for the county commission are for informational purposes only. No decisions will be made at today's work session. We will have, public comment will be provided. We're having a special meeting on Saturday, April 13th, in this very space, which is where we will continue with follow-up from today's discussion and have public comment and consideration of the conditional use permit on that day. We'll start at nine o'clock here then. I think we talked about doing some introductions of folks here at the table and then turning it over to Mary for the staff presentation. I'm Sarah Plinsky. I'm your county administrator.
I'm Terrell Mock. I'm here as county councillor.
Mary Miller, planner. Tanya Voit, zoning and codes director.
I'm Matthew Goff with Barbara Emerson Law Firm representing the applicant.
Ashton Martin, senior permitting and environmental manager for Savion.
Travis Narim, senior vice president, head of development from Savion.
Ben Poulstoy with the nature conservancy of Kansas.
I'm Lori Gates with Evergy.
And Brianna Baca, I'm the development director for Kansas Sky Energy Center with Savion. And we do have a group of subject matter experts who are with us today in another room that we can call in as needed.
I don't need this.
Are you in the Zoom?
Yes.
So you go into this, make that bigger, and then go down to share screen and then pick your presentation.
Thank you. It's just like at home, kind of.
Yeah, then now you're going to want to shrink this little, just this little. Can you move that?
This thing?
Yeah, there you go. And then make the little line. I'll go back to the big screen and then make, hit the little line. There you go. And then you can go down and hit presenter mode.
I'm a good presenter mode?
Yeah, the little screen, above, above, above. Yep.
I'll try it here. I don't know how to do that. I'll go here.
Oh, hit more. Then you can, oh no.
Look at that.
Now you hit your three little dots.
No.
Hi, presenter view.
Yep.
Yep, there you go.
Great. Thank you. Mary Miller, planner. And this is a conditional use permit application for a commercial utility scale solar energy conversion system. The area, the general area is north of the city of Lawrence, just west and northwest of the Lawrence Regional Airport. Sorry if I get used to this. This shows the more detailed outline of the property within the conditional use permit application. There is about 1,053 acres, I may be a little bit off on that, within the actual CUP application. And as you know, with applications, if a property, if a part of the conditional use is on a parcel, the entire parcel is included in the CUP application. And that's why the application is usually much larger than the project. On this graphic, there's a tanned highlighted area that is tier three of the Lawrence Urban Growth Area, and that's a portion of the urban growth area that is not expected to annex within the lifespan of a comprehensive plan. And as I mentioned, the actual area within the application is 1,105 acres. The area that's within the fences, anything that's been fenced, is about 734 acres, and the site area is 604 acres. And a project area is considered the total impacted area. It includes the site area along with all accessory buildings. It would include the substation, the wildlife corridors, even the access drives, anything associated with the solar farm would be included in the project area. And so this graphic kind of shows you where the project area is. We have the dark areas, that's where the solar panels are. We have the green areas, these are the proposed wildlife corridors. We have the blue areas, this is like wet areas or water. The more aquamarine areas are protected wetland areas. And then these white areas are not included in the solar project. So those would be outside of the solar project area. And I was going to mention during this project, the solar panels would collect the electricity and would take it up to a new substation that's being proposed on the west side of East 1400 Road. From there, the electricity would be transmitted to the east over to the Midland Substation, and then it would go through the distribution lines and be just joined into the grid. So I did mention the site area, that's a very important area. It's what we set our limits on. Solar farms in Douglas County cannot have more than 1,000 acre site area. And the site area is actually the area that's within the module. And a module is everything that's made up of the solar panels. So we have the solar array, has the solar panels, they're connected with the inverter and with the wires. They join together to make up a solar module. It's not the roads or anything else, it's just the solar panels, basically. So to the site area over here on the right, there's an example showing this is a very small solar farm. It has three modules. Those make up the site area. So when we measure that area to see if it's less than 1,000 acres, that's the area that we measure. And so this one, as I said, has about 604 acres. This is just a graphic showing the site area, just to illustrate that it is just the areas within the solar panels, not the access drives or the lay-down yard or any of those other features. This would be, I believe, a, I forget the exact megawatts, my notes, I don't have that page of my notes, but this would be a large utility scale solar energy conversion system. And it is, as I mentioned, it's proposing to take electricity up to a proposed substation. They are not proposing a battery energy storage system at this time. If they were going to do battery energy storage, that would have to come later. Right now, they're just intending to use the substation. So some key points is that it is commercial utility scale. It's proposing a side area of 604 acres where 1,000 is the maximum, and that substation is being proposed, but not battery energy storage. These are the review criteria we look at in the zoning regulations when we review a conditional use permit. So I'm going to go through these, but I'm going to leave the first one, the compliance with zoning regulations, for last, just because there's a lot of standards that have been established for solar facilities, and I think it'll be easier just to address them later on rather than starting right off with them. So the first thing we look at is compatibility with the zoning and land use of the area and compatibility with the character of the area. So this graphic shows the zoning in the area. It's primarily Ag 1, which is agricultural. There's areas of Ag 2, which is transitional agriculture, which could be agriculture, but most of the time it's smaller parcels and has a residence. We have the purple areas, those are general industrial. The lighter purple areas are light industrial. And we have some urban zoning in the area. We have open space to the left, that's the Lawrence Riverfront Park. And then to the right, we have IG, which is Lawrence Regional Airport. Jefferson County is to north. They were notified of this project. The planning office had questions about intersection traffic, but that was the only question they had, and their concerns were relieved. And we did notify the property owners in Jefferson County as well, and we didn't receive any comments from them. The land uses in the area provided by the Douglas County Appraisers Office. The purple area is all agriculture, so that is a primary use in the area. The yellow is single-family residences. I is industrial. Lawrence Riverfront Park is shown as industrial, but that's just because it was a former city landfill. It's actually serving as a park now. It's also in the airspace overlay districts due to its proximity to the Lawrence Regional Airport, and all these different colors show different imaginary zones, and they all have different height limitations. So if you want to build something taller, you may not be able to this close to the airport. The plans were provided to the FAA and to the Lawrence Regional Airport Advisory Board. The FAA provided a determination of no hazard, and the Regional Airport Advisory Board also had no concerns. There was a question at the planning commission meeting about this dash line, which is the wildlife mitigation buffer area. You can't have large waters, bodies of water in that area. So the question was raised, did they have any concerns with the solar farm being in this location? So I contacted the regional airport, and they indicated that no, the FAA did not have concerns with that. As a matter of fact, they often approve solar farms on airports, so it's not an issue for them that it's within that wildlife buffer. And I think they would have mentioned it with their determination, but I just wanted to confirm. And this shows the uses in the area. And I don't know if you can see the numbers. All the red dots are my attempt to identify all the residences. I can sometimes miss some, but this shows kind of the development pattern of residences in the area. And we have the uses, I have them numbered on the side, but I'll just go through them. We started out with number one, the joint Douglas County-Jefferson County landfill. Number two is the quarry at the north side of the county. And number three is a boat and RV storage. Number four on 1400 Road is Midland Substation. We go down to the Midland Store, they're at the intersection. And then we have Pines International, which is a manufacturing facility. Seven is the Lawrence Airport. Eight, we have the Riverfront Park. To the south of that, we have the Evergy Power Plant, and then below that, we have the industrial area in the city of Lawrence. Over again on the highway, we have the Sod Shop is number 11. Number 12 is a Schuck Implement Sales. Going to the east and west, we have a bed and breakfast, kind of an event venue. And then we have industrial uses along East 1450 Road. To the east, we have Prairie Moon School. We have a rural water district plant at 16, and at 17, we have the KU Fitch Reservation. So all in all, in this area, we have a wide range of uses. It ranges from ecological preservation areas to agriculture, residential, landfills, airports. So it's a wide range of uses. The proposed use being a solar facility is a very low-profile uses. The solar panels will be no more than 15 feet tall, so they are not going to be very imposing in appearance. And they will be located away from residences, will be about 500 foot away from residences. They're very low-impact, so there'll be very little sound associated with them, and there will be a sound limit required, so that the sound level has to be maintained below 60 decibels within 500 feet of a residence or at the property line. No lighting is being proposed with the solar facility except at the substation area, and that lighting will be on motion-activated switch or will be just switch-operated, and they will be shielded. And so with these standards, there should be no, it should be compatible with the existing land uses and zoning and land uses in that area. And one of the other things that we look at with compatibility is the traffic, because construction may not be as compatible as the actual solar facility. Construction is always more impactful, there's more activity, and there's more noise. So one of the measures to minimize the impact of construction is to designate a approved construction route map. And this map is developed by the county engineer and the grant and township trustee. It's not, I assume it's the final version, but it'll go to the county commission. And this access shows one access point into the facility, into and out. This is the full access here on North 1800 Road. It goes into the facility. The green areas are the township roads that have been designated for traffic. This yellow point is a right-out-only. And the reason access is restricted off of the highway is because it's a railroad just right along the side of the highway. So any large vehicles that try to pull in, if there's a train, they won't be able to pull in, they'll have to park on the highway. So to avoid that, the only access point allowed is down at the very south edge. And then traffic will occur throughout the facility. The two portions that are on the north side of Highway 24 or on the east side, they'll take direct access to the roadway. In addition to this, there will be a road maintenance agreement, and the road maintenance agreement will discuss, it'll explain how the roads we maintain, what the cost will be to maintain the roads, and other features such as that. And that will have to be agreed and signed prior to the commencement of the use. So other impacts that we look at with the zoning regulations, we are required to look at the impact on various items. And one of those is the, no, I believe what I'm looking at now is the suitability of the project. One of the review criteria is, is a property suitable to the uses to which it is currently restricted? And it is very well-suited to agricultural uses. This graphic shows the prime soils on the graphic on the left in green, and the graphic on the right shows the Class 1 and 2 soils, they're highlighted in tan. So there is good soil in the area, and it has been used for agriculture historically and is expected to continue to be used for agriculture with the addition of the solar farm. In addition, the facility is well-suited for the solar farm use due to the level terrain and the fact that there's very little environmentally sensitive features that would be impacted. And so that takes us to the review criteria that we look at, the impact on environmentally sensitive lands. I just pointed out the prime soils, which are classified as environmentally sensitive. And so there is a grading maximum. You're not allowed to grade over 5% of the site, and the intention of that is to protect prime soils and other farmland. And so they're suggesting right now a 0.2% grading, so very limited grading due to the very level terrain of this property, very little grading would be required. So another feature we look at with environmentally sensitive lands is wetlands. And the map on the right is from the Wetland Mapper from the U.S. Fish and Wildlife website. And they map all wetlands. So they will include farm ponds as wetlands, our environmentally sensitive features requirements that we look at jurisdictional wetlands. So not all the wetlands shown on the Fish and Wildlife map are wetlands that need to be protected. So usually, it's necessary to do a wetland delineation, which the applicant has done. And the map on the left shows the jurisdictional wetlands, and they will be protected with a 50-foot buffer. And there are some stands of trees, even though this is a very heavily farmed area, in that very north corner where the substation is being proposed, and this is north of Highway 24. In that very northeast-west corner, as you can see in this graphic, there is a stand of mature trees, and those would not be impacted with this development. Another criteria we look at is, does it conform to the recommendations of the comprehensive plan? Chapter 2, Natural Resources, directs us to look at excessive greenhouse gases. And one of the action steps is to develop land use regulations and incentives to reduce greenhouse gas emissions. And in 2022, the zoning regulations were amended to add specific standards for solar energy conversion systems. Previously, they were just grouped in with utilities, but this did make them easier to process and to regulate by including them with specific standards. And then Action Step 6.2 recommends a plan where we identify specific actions to reduce greenhouse gases. And while this is not specifically a plan to do it, it would be an action step, because with this, with increasing alternative energy, it would reduce or maybe even close the Evergy Power Plant, which would reduce the greenhouse gases in Douglas County. And then Chapter 3, Growth and Development, has some, a goal that we protect and preserve the rural character, and some of the action steps, one is to minimize agricultural land conversion to other non-agricultural uses. And typically, when we have applications, someone comes in and wants to do a project on agricultural land, the assumption is it will never go back to agriculture. It's usually not reversible. But in this case, this project is going to, would occur at the same time as agriculture. Agrivoltaics is the combined use of land for photovoltaics and agriculture. Whether it's more passive agriculture would just be the planting of a cover crop or more active agriculture, such as grazing or planting of specialty crops. And so it's not exactly a conversion, it's more of an addition of a use. But the goal is that when this is done and when it's decommissioned, the land remains agricultural, so it is not converting any land out of the agricultural. And then, as I mentioned, I was going to look at the compliance with zoning regulations. And so our standards have us look at a whole set of impacts. Whenever there's a project proposed, we look at what are the impacts? So number one is, what is the visual impact? And a solar farm will have some visual impact just due to the large size. However, the panels are 12 to 15 feet tall. So that visual impact, you can usually address with buffering landscaping, which is required. And most of the visual impact would come if you live above the solar farm. So these graphics show the elevations. This one is more of a color-coded one. This one shows the actual contours. The land is very level terrain. I don't see homes above the solar farm. So the visual impact can be addressed with buffering and screening. And this is an example from the applicant's, there's the middle package. They provided some simulation images showing the facility as viewed from the residences, and these triangles show where they were viewing from, how it would look without screening, and how it would look with screening, with the landscape screening. And as you look through that, you can kind of get an idea of how effective the screening would be. Another thing we look at is the impact on wildlife habitat, flora, and fauna. And so the applicant did provide information that we've sent on, or they sent on to Kansas Division of Parks and Recreation, I'm sorry, Wildlife and Parks. And they provided just general information, but that included guidance documents. And some of the guidance documents said that you should not have a solar farm within a mile of a river, and that if, you should have your panels painted white, the metal boundaries of the panels painted white. And this avoids that lake effect, that birds would fly by and see the solar farm and assume it's a lake and then be injured. So I contacted the representative that had provided that guidance document to ask if they wanted us to pull the solar farm back, and would they require the panels to be painted white? And they said that this hasn't really been studied in Kansas, the data they have is not from Kansas, so they are not making that a requirement. But they would appreciate, or what they wanted is for the applicant to conduct bird mortality surveys and insect community surveys for the first two years, so they could get data and find out, does this actually create the lake effect? And then they would be able to provide better guidance or recommendations in the future. And so it's, we're not requiring it to be pulled back, but those surveys are conditions of approval. And we look at the impact on cultural, historical, or archaeological features. So the applicant provided their archaeological survey, which was sent to the state historical preservation officer. They indicated they had no concerns. And I always get this name wrong, but it is the vice chair of the Douglas County Heritage Conservation Council. And he commented that most of the archaeological finds were up nearer the Jefferson County line where the Indians had a flint, I forget what it's called. Well, that they had like a flint working area. And he indicated there wouldn't be any archaeological finds in this subject property due to the fact that it's been farmed and has been disturbed. And so there is a historical property down in the southeast corner, that is the Vermilia Bonner House. I think you probably have seen that if you've been on this road. It's on the National Register of Historic Places, and that does not have any environs, so it's just that piece of property is protected. It doesn't have that surrounding environs that some do. And so looking at this, the project would have no impact on cultural, historical, or archaeological features. We also look on the impact on critical wildlife habitats or threatened and endangered species. And the applicant's consultant provided a review of the critical habitats and the wildlife species in the area. And one that was mentioned was the northern long-eared bat. And they, it's present in the area, and they have one tree they identified that would be a suitable roosting tree for the northern long-eared bat. So the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service said that these tree, if it has to be removed for some reason, just don't remove it from July to the 1st of August, June through August, because that's their roosting time. There were no maternity trees identified in the area, and that was the only impact that they identified. And then we looked at the other items, most of these I've discussed already. Environmentally sensitive lands, I discussed. Water quality and erosion. With this, the middle of the application, we had a preliminary stormwater study. That was to give us an idea, could we go ahead and recommend approval? But once it moves forward, a more detailed stormwater study is needed. But that preliminary stormwater study indicated that with the cover crop and with the solar arrays, and with the additional detention that would be added for the substation, and the drainage patterns would be maintained, but the amount of runoff would actually be reduced. And so we feel confident moving ahead with that, and then we'll have the additional stormwater studies. The impact on infrastructure, that would be addressed with the road maintenance agreement and the construction route. And then the FAA, they did provide the determination of no hazard. So the cumulative impacts, the impacts that we have identified would be, there would be impacts to people in the area from construction activity and noise and traffic, and that would be minimized with the construction route, and then also with hours of operation. And that's something that we have discussed, staff and the applicant have discussed since the planning commission meeting, to try to come up with better hours of operation. And so I'll mention those when I get into the conditions. And then there would be that visual impact, just by the fact that the solar farm is large. So when you're there, you will see a change in the view, but with the continued use of agriculture, the agrivoltaics, that should minimize the impact. And there's other features we have to look at, like company experience, the decommissioning, and most of these were reviewed, and they are included in the staff report, and they're also listed as conditions of approval. So then we get into the actual standards. This first one was farmland. When we developed these regulations, agrivoltaics was very, very new, so we basically just encouraged farming. There's a lot more information on agrivoltaics now, and it's growing all the time, so we expect to have more information. There will be reviews and projects showing agrivoltaics, and I'll discuss that a little bit more when we get to the conditions. This was provided by the applicant with their application, and the dotted areas show the short mix of grasses, which is where they were proposing for grazing. And one of the conditions is, we're asking for a little bit more phasing information and more detailed information on agrivoltaics at the very beginning, and then there will be, there'll be regular reviews and reports to the county commission after that. And I know I keep mentioning agrivoltaics, and this is just the definition. It is the joint use of property for photovoltaics and agriculture, and the agricultural activities occur underneath and surrounding the panels and modules. Glare is another standard. The glare study identified three areas where glare might occur. It noted these were occur for about 10 minutes a day, or possibly about three months out of the year. And the study indicated that the angle of the panels and the time of day, the glare would be in the same direction as the sun, so it should not be an issue. However, we were not able to get our heads around that. So there is a condition that if glare does occur, that mitigation would be, mitigation measures would be taken to reduce that glare. The landscaping buffer is required, that's a standard. And in the graphic on the left provided by the applicant, you can see the areas where they would be putting, the 20-foot-wide buffer areas. The vegetation they're proposing is on the right. The top is deciduous trees and shrubs. The middle is a mix of deciduous and evergreen trees and shrub, and the bottom is prairie grasses. So the process would be, they would contact the property owner, get their input, what they would prefer, and then that would be the kind of landscaping that they would show on the plan for those areas. All underground, all electrical interconnections have to be underground, except for the tie-ins, except for necessary to avoid environmentally sensitive lands. So where we have prime farmland, these orange wires could be above ground, and these are called cab lines. And they, the purpose is, they are the ones that make the panels twist, so they follow the sun. And so the applicant has asked for a modification to allow these to be above ground, so they don't have to do all that grading and trenching to put them underground. And this was requested with a previous or only other solar facility in Douglas County, and that was approved because the goal is to minimize grading and damage to the soils. So staff is recommending approval of that requested modification. So I'm going to go through, hopefully pretty quickly, the revised conditions. So there's two sets of conditions listed. If you look through the memo, it listed the conditions that were sent to the planning commission and then how they've been altered. The first step is just kind of technical stuff, things that weren't on the plan that we do need, like parking dimensions, exterior lighting, just pretty much finishing up the plans. The decommissioning and reclamation plan changes. We do need a note that the piles, the metal support piers, will be completely removed by being pulled up. And that was suggested by the planning commission during their discussion, so that the piles, the piers aren't just underground corroding forever, you know, they'll be removed from the site. And then we added the note that a new road maintenance agreement, including a route map, would be executed prior to the commencement of decommissioning, because given the timeframe... map, would be executed prior to the commencement of decommissioning, because given the timeframe of this project, it could be 25 or 50 years from now, and the conditions of the roads may be different at that time. Another thing that would have to be completed is that road maintenance agreement. And as I mentioned, it'll show the route map, it'll identify the payments, when they'll be paid, and how much they would be. It will also include penalties, so that if traffic does not follow the designated construction route, what penalties could occur. And construction traffic is not just the heavy equipment. It includes the employee traffic. So these construction route maps, that's where the traffic for the employees is also limited. And that way, we strongly limit the use of the township roads, and it also gives the public the, kind of the assurance of where that traffic will be. Some other things we need, if you looked through the conditions, we did add some additional provisions where third-party reviews could be required. They would be financed by the operator. So this contract is just something that will be signed before the plans are released, but it's their agreement to pay for that third-party reviews. There are provisions, you know, that they work with the zoning codes director in selecting the operator, or the third party. It can go to the county commission for final determination if an appeal is made. But this contract is just them agreeing that they will pay for that. The stormwater management study, the county engineer included some pretty specific technical steps, what he wanted to see in that next stormwater management study. That provides guidance for the applicant, and will make reviewing much more streamlined and efficient. We do want the revised vegetation management and agrivoltic plan, as I mentioned earlier. We want the phases outlined more clearly, and some more detailed information provided. And then the landscape buffer plantings, once they've gone through that process, they would show that on the plan. So this set of conditions are the second set, and these are the conditions and restrictions of use that will be added to the plan, and these will apply to the plan throughout their lifetime. It's a 25-year timeframe. All construction traffic is limited to the route. And item C is one that's probably very important. It is the limit on construction hours. So pile driving is the most impactful of all the construction activities. It's the noisiest. It's limited from 7:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. Monday through Friday. Other construction activity is limited from 6:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. Monday through Friday. And there are exceptions for inclement weather. So if they cannot work during the week, they could work on Saturday. They would have to get approval from the zoning and codes director, and she can approve up to four. And if they need more than that, it would have to go to the county commission. So there's limits on the approvals, but they would have the opportunity to work on Saturdays. Our goal is to minimize the impact on the neighbors, but also shorten the time lane for construction as much as possible. The last step there, the low-impact activity, this would be construction activity that isn't louder than the solar facility would be when it's in operation. The 60 decibels measured 500 feet from the residence or at the property line, that would be the noise impact level. If you're quieter than that, that construction can happen on Saturday and Sundays during daylight hours. We have the requirement about the glare that would be minimized, if it creates glare, the solar panels. The bird mortality surveys and insect surveys are noted. The prohibition on removing the potential bat roost tree in June or July. And then we have the grading requirement, the height requirement. And these are all just standards straight out of the zoning regulations. Most of this is straight out of the zoning regulations. It does have the sound level, which is in our standards. Oh, is that electrical interconnection required to be underground? That's the one that has the modification being requested. It has the process for transfer of operator. All of these are very similar to what's in our standards, with the exception of the agrivoltic report and review. That's not in the standards, because we were being very general at that time. But this condition would have us, one to two years after the use commences, we would get a review, a report of what has happened, what agrivoltic activity has happened, and what the goals are for the future. That would be reviewed by the zoning and codes director, and then it would go to the county commission. And so that gives a lot of oversight and participation in the agrivoltic activities. And then that would happen with each five-year review after that. And so the rest of these were just standards straight out of our zoning regulations. These are two, some new ones. Other lay-down yard being reclaimed. As the lay-down yard will be finished when construction is over, everything else has to be reclaimed at the end of the 25-year period. But this would have six months, and then that should be reclaimed. A vegetation bond would be required. You know, the expectation is, it'll go into place, once it's constructed, the vegetation will be planted, and we'll have a cover crop or agrivoltaics. And so the vegetation bond would be posted, and that would be released when vegetation has been determined to be well-established, and the conditions actually list those parameters. And then it includes how to determine if construction activities exceed approved sound limits. And so that should actually be moved up to this operation, the hours of operation. But we added that late, so right now it's just trailing along, but we will add that into the right location. And staff had recommended approval of this with their conditions, and had recommended approval of the modifications. The planning commission failed to make a recommendation. They voted four to four to recommend approval, so it was a tie, and that is considered a vote for denial. In addition, a valid protest petition had been submitted, so a unanimous vote of the county commissioners would be required to approve the application. And so that concludes what I was going to talk about.
The commission have questions for Mary before we move on?
Do we want to start questions at this point, or do we want to hear from the applicant also and hold them for that? Commissioners, hold. We'll go ahead.
Okay. Actually, before we let the applicant speak, I'm going to pull up some information related to the tax impact to the project. This is what happens when you have 10,000 windows open. Here we go. Nope. Yep. Okay, commissioners, I worked with county appraisal staff and county administration staff to provide a little bit of an overview on the potential initial tax impact of the Kansas Sky Center project. You're going to hear from the applicant about the tax impact on the state assessed tax value in years 11 through 25, but there is a tax impact in the first 10 years related to the land underneath the project that is leased locally. It is our determinate, it's from what we can best determine through multiple conversations with the Kansas Department of Revenue Property Value Division, that the land underneath that will be taxed locally and is not included in the state assessed number. So we kind of just wanted to provide an overview of what that land is currently bringing in, in tax dollars, and what the potential impact will be of the project. So the first table just outlines the ag value and the market value for the number of acres. Then the next table outlines what will happen if that, if that land is moved from ag taxing classification to commercial taxing classification. It is the interpretation of both the appraiser and in consultation with Kador, that the land underneath this, because of the predominance of use is no longer agriculture, will move to commercial. So there's a much higher taxation rate for that. So what we show here is the tax per acre difference between if it was a hypothetical taxes at a commercial classification and what it was under ag for 2023. The column, there's a column there for total taxes, and then we just broke it out for Douglas County and for grant township. So we anticipate that the estimated annual taxes for the total classification will be $144,850 when you subtract what the current tax bill is. We anticipate a net change in taxes of $132,627. The rest of this memo outlines how that mill levy is broken down for that area, so how that is broken down. These are all the taxing districts for the property discussed. We also wanted to just provide some context related to annual changes, at least in agricultural land. So, you know, this isn't commercial land, but since this was ag land, so you can see how much variance there is in what those market classifications are for ag land. So we can also provide that for commercial land, if that's something the commission finds valuable. And just then, this, this table shows, you know, what the potential leased land property values on the ag land would be. And that's all I have, commissioners. So at this point, I'm going to turn it over to the applicant.
And I just want to make sure that the public knows that all of these figures and all of these slides that we're showing are available in the packet for anyone online.
Turn it over to Matt.
Good afternoon, commissioners. Matt Goff, Barbara Emerson Law Firm, representing the applicant. Thank you for taking the time for this work session. One thing I think everyone in the room can agree upon is that there's a lot of information to consider. Next slide, please. The column on the left is the table of contents of the original application packet. The column on the right is the table of contents of the supplemental packet that you have in your materials today. All of this information is available on the project's website, which is shown below, although it's cut off slightly. These materials are, they're voluminous because it's necessary. The solar regulations impose high standards. The application meets or exceeds those standards. There's a 34-page CUP application supplement in the original application materials. That's document number four on the left-side column, that categorically explains how the project meets or exceeds the requirements of the code. Next slide, please. The new documents in the supplemental packet augment the original materials to explain in detail why this location is by far the optimal location of the project. These materials illustrate how the project will have tremendous positive economic impacts on the county and other local taxing jurisdictions over the life of the CUP. There is additional information about agrivoltaics. Memorandum of understanding with the nature conservancy that describes how the project intends to collaborate with a respected third party to administer agrivoltaics. There's an updated sound study and exhibits discussing zinc and groundwater monitoring. The applicant concurs with the recommendation of the planning staff. The applicant was in agreement with the original conditions proposed by the staff and continues to be in agreement with the revised conditions set forth in your packet today. If you consider just how many conditions there are, and that the revised conditions are more restrictive than those originally proposed, the fact that the applicant is prepared to accept all of them speaks highly of the collaboration between the applicant and the staff. The meetings we had with staff were both necessary and productive, and the applicant is very appreciative of those efforts and that collaboration. With these conditions, the project has agreed to address important concerns to the staff and to the public. You just heard Mary Miller about those conditions, so I won't repeat them except for one. Stormwater runoff in North Lawrence is an important topic. So let me emphasize, the project can only proceed if this commission, with review and input from the county engineer, approves the project's stormwater management studies and plans. The applicant is confident that the project can meet this high standard and comfortable committing to this heightened level of public oversight. We have multiple speakers today, and in the interest of reserving time for your questions, I'm going to invite Travis Narum to the microphone to discuss the site selection and economic impact. Thank you.
Good afternoon, commissioners. As mentioned, my name is Travis Narum. I'm the senior vice president and head of development, and really more importantly, fellow Douglas County resident. Really excited to be here, excited about this project. And one of the things we wanted to talk about was, why have the project here? We get asked that all the time in public meetings, of why did you pick this spot? Why not over there? Why not over there? We have a team of GIS analysts that spend hours and hours and hours poring over GIS, and we look at, first, a bunch of general criteria to identify project areas that could have potential. Places with no residential structure and is greater than 20 acres in size, not located in a regulatory floodplain, average slope less than 8%, limited tree cover, not located in a conservation area, and then ideally within one mile of an existing transmission line. So we start with that funnel, we put everything in, and 12 sites came out as potential in Douglas County. So from there, we looked at and compared the following metrics. Average slope, percent floodplain, percent tree cover, prime farmland, structures within 1,000 feet, the model capacity and upgrades of the transmission grid, the anticipated capacity and network upgrades for new interconnection filings at the Southwest Power Pool. And that's a regulatory body that reviews all interconnection requests to make sure that they can feasibly inject into the grid. Kansas Energy Center has the lowest residential density around the site, the least amount of grading required due to the lowest average slope, had no regulatory floodplain impacts, no removal of mature stands of trees, no impacts to cultural resources, no native prairies, no known occurrences of federal or state-listed species, comparable project area consisting of prime farmland relative to other sites. So we recognize there are, there is some prime farmland, but it's less than any of the other 12 that were feasible. And a financially viable transmission capacity with no additional transmission lines required to interconnect. None of the other sites had existing transmission capacity. And to give you an idea of how much of a needle in the haystack it can be to find transmission, we had a project in the 2017 MISOQ, which is similar to SPP in Minnesota. It was one of only two projects. There were 250 megawatts out of about 5,000 megawatts, two projects that were able to move forward economically. So finding economic projects on existing transmission capacity in this country is just incredibly hard. So this is truly a diamond in the rough. It's just really hard to find great sites. Every other alternative site had transmission upgrades that would have been non-economic, and they were less suitable. So that is how we ended up at this site. Just wanted to highlight that. Moving on to the economic impact, we covered a little bit of the initial 10 years, but over the lifetime of the project, including ancillary benefits, so things like construction people that eat in the local restaurants and things like that, it's estimated a $269 million impact, and there's details in the economics within the packet that you all have. The tax revenue to local jurisdictions over 25 years is 61 million that gets allocated by millage. And as a Lawrence School District father, having a daughter that's currently there and one that just graduated, seeing $26 million going to schools would be huge. It probably won't hit in time, unfortunately, for my children, but I think it's, it's huge. But, you know, 22 million to the county, another 11 million to township, the library of the state, so a big impact. I will, I will note, I think some people noticed that in our initial presentation, there was 100 million that was back in July. The things that have changed since that time, we dropped storage because it wasn't viable and is not in this application, and that obviously had its own financial impact. In addition, we've dropped from 30 years back to 25 years due to the way that Douglas County ordinance is structured, so that trims some off of those out years, if you will. I will note the Evergy ownership is a boon also, because of the way they're taxed, it provides additional revenues. So it would be lower if an IPP, so Savion is an IPP. If we owned and operated ourselves, that money would be lower, so this is a net benefit to the county. And I'll add that there's no additional burden on jurisdictions. One of the great things about solar is it's a silent revenue generator. It doesn't make noise. Once it's constructed, there's not a lot of traffic. There's not a burden on local infrastructure, because you're adding 500 jobs. So it truly is a net revenue generator that has very few impacts. And then the construction impacts, we just want to note that, you know, that will be addressed through the rumor. We recognize anytime something is being built, it has an impact. Coming out here and trying to drive down Sixth Street anymore is a direct, direct corollary, right? Like, you know, construction is just painful sometimes, and we recognize that, and we will do everything in our power to minimize it. But, you know, so with that said, you know, I just want to highlight that if we want to do solar in Lawrence, solar in Douglas County, this is the spot. I think, you know, if we want to be part of the energy future and bring renewable energy, this is a great project, and I hope we'll have your support. Thank you.
Mike Dash. So Ashton Martin, Senior Permitting Environmental Manager for Savion Energy. I'm here today to speak about agrivoltaics. Sarah Mosher, Director of Farm Operations in Agrivoltaics, unfortunately is not able to be here today. She's actually in Washington, DC, reporting on She's actually in Washington, DC, reporting on Savion Agrivoltaics project. So I think it's important to acknowledge that there is prime farmland at this site, but also to contextualize that in the broader Douglas County picture. So within Douglas County, there are approximately 103,000 acres of prime farmland. So Douglas County is 303,000 acres, so about a third of the county is prime farmland, according to the USDA Soil Survey Geo Database. Within the project's site area, there is 312 acres of prime farmland, which represents 0.3% of the prime farmland in Douglas County. Now, some would like to make the distinction between prime farmland and Class 1 soils. So to provide you with that information, again, according to the USDA SIRGO database, there is 5,615 acres of Class 1 soils in Douglas County and 77 acres within the site area, which represents 1.4% of the Class 1 soils in Douglas County. So that is all to say that this project will have Class 1 soils within it. It'll have prime farmland within it. But it is not going to neither solve local food production goals nor prevent them from happening. So when we talk about agrivoltaics, there are really three keys that we see to successful implementation. Those are access, investment, and collaboration. These are the same keys or pillars to success that a lot of the local farmers and emerging farmers are facing themselves. So during outreach with stakeholders, it was brought to our attention that the way that some of our leases are structured, that it may be prohibitive of agrivoltaics. And so we went back, worked with the landowner, amended those leases so it explicitly allows for agrivoltaics. Those lease amendments are included in our supplemental packet as Exhibit 3B. I think it's also important to acknowledge Evergy as a willing owner and operator, which I can tell you is unique. Not every utility is willing to even entertain, let alone support, agrivoltaics. Investment, you know, Savion recognized that agrivoltaics is part of the overall solution to deployment of renewables throughout the country if we're going to reach our decarbonization goals. Savion has a vested interest in seeing agrivoltaics succeed. And to that end, Savion has committed to $100,000 for an agrivoltaic fund to directly support research and development of agrivoltaics. Before and since the Planning Commission meeting, I have had literally dozens of conversations, one-on-one conversations, with local agricultural producers, nonprofits, research institutions, who almost unanimously are interested, if not excited, about participation in agrivoltaics. So this is all to say that we, as the applicant, have done everything that we can envision to set this project up for success from an agrivoltaics perspective. And that is inclusive of working with Evergy and the Nature Conservancy to begin a third-party partnership. And with that, I'll pass it over to Ben.
Thanks, Ashton. Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name is Ben Postalweight. I am the State Director for the Nature Conservancy in Kansas. Probably prudent for me to say at this point that I'm not the applicant, but a partner in the MOU for the agrivoltaics project. So at the Nature Conservancy, our mission is to conserve the lands and the waters on which all life depends. What I really want to leave you with today is an idea of what the Nature Conservancy does and also why we're interested in the project. So with our mission in mind, it's important to acknowledge that we're facing some very complex problems. The problems we focus on at the Nature Conservancy are climate issues and biodiversity loss. We do believe that collaboration is unanswered to those issues with partners that exist in the room today. And for 20 years, the Conservancy, the Nature Conservancy, has partnered with energy developers and power purchasers to accelerate the transition to renewable energy. We have done that while working to avoid impacts to iconic landscapes, Tallgrass Prairie, Flint Hills, Grasslands being one of them. And we have a vision for a clean and equitable energy future that includes a rapid transition to renewable energy that'll be good for people and the planet. The land, one important thing to remember as we talk about the energy future and the build-out of renewable assets, there's no doubt the land use footprint will be large. That can raise the potential for land use conflicts over renewable energy. And one of the things at the Nature Conservancy that we focus on is to, we need to go smart to go fast. We need to be thoughtful about how we deploy those renewable energy assets in ways that support goals for climate, conservation, and communities. And to that end, TNC sees ourselves as an important partner in the rapid renewable energy build-out. Our job is to safeguard nature and support an equitable transition for communities. And most often, in the past, that's meant we avoid intact prairie landscapes like the Flint Hills in favor of land that's already been converted from its natural state. But as we do that, we can't be shortsighted. We need to be equally focused on providing food and water sustainably. We know we can produce food that doesn't just avoid harm, but actively restores nature and reverses previous damage. And at the Nature Conservancy, we have a regenerative agriculture program where we focus on that type of work. So regenerative food systems can ensure that we're able to feed many generations to come in integrating that regenerative agriculture practice into renewable energy development, which is what Ashton talked about with agrivoltaics. It's an emerging approach. It can have a very big impact on how we deploy renewable energy on the landscape, can have big rewards for biodiversity and the transition to clean energy. So that is why the Nature Conservancy recently entered into this memorandum of understanding with Evergy to explore the potential for agrivoltaics that includes habitat restoration, productive farmland, and solar energy. So I'll take a moment. I'll focus on a couple of goals of that MOU. One goal is that our approach be collaborative. We know that we would, as a result of this work, we would solicit input from a variety of stakeholders. We believe that the work can be overseen and approved by an advisory body made up of that diverse group of stakeholders. We'll work to develop a research plan to ensure that the project is scalable and benefits all stakeholders, those stakeholders being producers, farmers, ranchers, energy customers, landowners, and the conservation community at large. We also want this project to have measurable and replicable results. This would help us ensure that as we do other projects, as the Nature Conservancy engages with other projects, that we're balancing the needs of producers, farmers, ranchers, and energy users alike. And so with those goals up front of mind, the next thing I wanted to just discuss briefly is to communicate to everybody here, we do have staff members that are focused on agriculture work. We do have staff members that understand yields. They understand environmental conditions that impact production. They understand water use and conservation practices. So we're already doing that work at the Nature Conservancy. We've also got members on our board, our trustees. They're experts in agronomy and conservation practices, as well as several who manage family farms, both large and small. We also have several different programs within TNC, both in the state and beyond, that focus on integrating agriculture, grazing lands, into how we cite renewable energy assets. So we have experience with renewable energy assets as well. So really, again, to get back to what I wanted to leave you with, is a high-level idea of what TNC does, how we do it, why we are excited about this project, kind of some of the high-level goals that we would have as part of the MOU. Yeah, and we think we're well-positioned to help. So really, just want to thank you for the opportunity to talk today. I'll certainly take questions as is appropriate.
Commissioners, we have a number of other subject matter experts in the building who can answer questions you may have. And with that, we're pleased to stand for those questions, and thank you again.
Thank you, and thank you all for being here. Commissioners, who would like to start with questions? We have 30 to 45 minutes to entertain those. And the idea that staff can take the time in the next week and a half, two weeks, to bring those answers back to us and get them into our public packet for our public session when we will have the full conversation, public input, and vote on the 13th. Who would like to begin?
I'll start. So I'd like to hear a little bit more about the MOU with Nature Conservancy. And I'm really interested in how you're going to engage with potential partners, all those people that Ashton said were excited to be involved. And then also, you know, how do we monitor the work that they're doing, the work that Evergy's doing? There's a lot in the agrivoltaics plan. It seems ambitious, you know, there's a lot of things that we're going to do. How do we monitor that? What will be, how will we ensure the community that those things are being done?
So I'll start. The first part of the question is, how do we engage partners? The beauty of it is, is we already do it. So that's one strength that the Nature Conservancy brings to this table. We're already partnering with a number of nonprofits in the area. We do a lot of work with other city and county officials already. We have relationships across the board with, I would argue, all of the conservation agencies in the state and even beyond. Frankly, most of the conservation agencies that we partner with aren't just in Kansas, they're in other states. So that's how we leverage that, is we use those relationships we already have to integrate. That's one of the benefits of having such an experienced staff and frankly, a board of trustees with experience in this space, that we have lots of folks to lean on to leverage those relationships. So that's the first thing I would say to answer the question on partnerships, is that we've already got those relationships in the state. We've got a long history here. We've been here since 1989, the Nature Conservancy has. So we've built a good reputation with producers and industry alike on how to get these conservation things done in the state. The second piece of your question, when it comes to monitoring, I should dance with this a little bit. Just the exact plan for monitoring isn't written down today, but I'll give you an idea of how we have done it on other sites. So the Nature Conservancy operates a, what we call a model or a demonstration farm in Dickinson County, Kansas. It's called Terrace Lane Farm. Part of that project has been to monitor soil health, monitor water at that particular facility. We call it a facility. It's a working farm. So that's the interesting part about having a science-based organization like the Nature Conservancy involved, is we've already got projects where we do this type of monitoring, whether it be soil sampling or water sampling. We also have relationships with academia to get a lot of those things done. Part of the dream of this would be to make it a large-scale research project where there are people physically on-site doing those types of soil evaluations, water testing, and things like that. And so that's probably what I think makes sense to how to answer that question today. As or when, if a permit gets approved, that's when we really dive in, and we have a really detailed plan of how we might do that.
Commissioner, do you mind if I follow up on that one?
Go ahead.
So after the packet hit for the Planning Commission and the community was really talking about this agrivoltaics plan not being sufficient or not having the pieces in it that they were looking for, and one of those being just someone with experience that is not an energy company, et cetera. And I had just voiced some kind of high-level things, and I do see those in here, and I'm really glad for that. These are, you know, they're very high-level. So like, one of the things we had flagged was that some of the leases did not specifically allow for agrivoltaics, and that seemed like a bad idea. So I'm glad to see that that has been addressed and corrected, this idea of bringing on a third party that maybe could be the translator between what the energy company was expecting to do, what the community was expecting to see. But I guess my question is, and I, when do those details unfold? Like, when does that plan really get put together in the process of, you know, we've got an application to look at on the 13th, but there's a lot of detail yet to fill in, including, you were talking about like having relationships with partners, et cetera. So just a timeline.
I'll start, and then I'm going to let you guys finish on the actual timeline. So one of the things, so we've already got our TNT staff thinking about how to integrate this. We've got them looking at other projects that TNT has been partnering with, with other entities across the country. So our TNT staff is queued up already to start designing a plan. You know, it's funny that one of the things I noticed today is with the things like even as simple as the cab lines, being above ground or underground impacts what an ag plan could look like. So we wait on those things to get resolved and permit to be issued. I'm going to let the applicant answer better questions on timeline for plan, if that's appropriate. Ashton, or whoever.
Yeah, so in the MOU, I believe, under Section 3 workflow timeline, it anticipates a definitive agreement between Evergy and the Nature Conservancy in the third quarter of 2024. You know, timeline on the project as a whole, between, you know, Evergy's required regulatory approval from the Kansas Corporation Commission, engineering and procurement, advancing design, and acquiring materials. I mean, the earliest, what I'm getting at is the earliest start of construction would likely be the end of 2025. So between the third quarter of 2024, execution of the definitive agreement, and prior to release of the building permits for construction.
And in addition, it's a requirement of the Conditions 1E that we provide you all with a more detailed information on the agrivoltaic, activities being proposed before this is released. So we can't put the cart before the horse, too. So it's really hard to go out and say, okay, Farm A, you get to farm this portion, and Farm B, you can do grazing in this portion when we don't have an approved project either. So that's another issue that you also get to deal with.
And maybe just to just clarify the conditions. So in addition to just the approved project, but also just that site plan. So that was a conversation with zoning staff and the staff team regarding just trying to have that one-to-two-year, you know, initial plan to come back before the county commission, and then there'd be five-year reviews.
And can I, I listed four plans that were off of Mary's presentation of things that kind of were yet to be completed or that would be conditions before the application would move forward. One was the third-party contracts for review pieces. One was the stormwater management plan, the detailed one. Another is this agrivoltaics plan, and the other was for final buffers. And there were others. I just took that off of one slide. So roads would be another, and probably the pilot communication conversation also. Okay, all right.
That's not part of the planning CUP review, but like the decommissioning plan would need to be revised with those notes. So there are various steps. Some of them are just administrative steps that we can do. Some of them will have to come back to you. So it's possible you could approve the CUP, and then you'll see the stormwater plan later. And plans will keep coming back to you. It just can't be released. So it's approved, but it's in our office. It doesn't go anywhere until all those steps have been approved.
Okay, I think that's the piece I was getting at, is, you know, what's the order of operations where we still do not lose control of the project?
Yeah, if I can add a little bit more to that, Mary, and Tony will kick me if I get it wrong. That was really how we tried to design the conditions, was that similar to how really the conditional use permit process really isn't designed for projects of this size and scale that require multiple interactions. So we ended up looking more at how the city approaches preliminary plots, final plots, site plans. I'm not a city planner, so I'm going to just say a whole bunch of stuff that cities do in terms of reviewing those things. And so at each step in that process, there's public engagement. There's, you know, Planning Commission or City Commission engagement. There's applicant and staff engagement, and the project gets better at each step in the process. The conditional use permit process, it doesn't really work that way. They come to the county commission and get an approval, and then the rest traditionally is just approved by staff administratively. What we tried to do was work inside the regulations that we have available to us, which was to bring you a conditional use permit, but then ride into the conditions that these additional plans and steps, which really are frankly too early to be developed at this stage. So, you know, it's premature to have a site plan. It's premature to have a stormwater plan until more work happens, but that the commission still has oversight and control and monitoring of that through this process. So we anticipate, and there's way more than four, in the conditions that will, can all come back to the Board of County Commissioners, not just administratively to staff for review. Each one of those requires review and approval before there is operations. Now, we have a more technical term for that in the conditions, but all of those things will be required before operations are approved.
Thank you. I wanted- Thank you, I wanted clarity on that, I appreciate it.
Just staying with the agrivoltaics plan, and then we have the agrivoltaics report, right? So those are two different things, and I heard one to two years on the report, and maybe I misread the, but it looked like it would take two to three years to establish some of the agrivoltaics, if I was doing the timeline correctly. So I'm interested in why the report was after one to two years, but the timeline that it took for some of those agrivoltaics to be now, and I could, I could be mistaken, so, but I was just trying to put that together to line that up.
I think I thought was, the report is just the initial plan, report is a plan.
Okay, so.
And then we do the thing, and then we monitor.
Okay.
If that makes sense, and I'm looking at the.
It does, it, it may give us an opportunity for more discussion to line up where the plan happens, where the reporting happens. We may need to develop the, I'd like to have a conversation as a commission eventually down the line, that we can line up the monitoring and the reporting with the plan. And I want to make sure that we're not doing the reporting before we'd have enough results to really tell whether it was effective or not, that was just my concern.
I was gonna mention that agrivoltaics is a range of activity, so a lot of it's gonna be passive cover crop, especially at first. So it may take two years to get the cover crop established, so at that point, you may get a report saying, our cover crop has been 100% established, that's the report, but then it would have goals for what's gonna happen then, and those would be more detailed because you've got these two years to work on it. And that would go to zoning and codes for review, and they would work through that, and then it would come to you, and then you would have the final say, are these goals acceptable? And those would be the goals they would work through following, because it'll be easier to do it incrementally, rather than trying to come up with an overall agrivoltaic plan. But that way, it is sure to happen, as long as we have these regular reviews and reports.
And how do those conversations happen? Is that just between the applicant and staff? Is that a public conversation, like, which, I assume eventually it comes back to a public meeting, but in terms of, instead of just guessing in the dark, in terms of building a plan and then find out whether or not the three of us like it, what's the process of that?
Are you talking about specifically about the agrivoltaic plan, or?
In this case, yes, but that probably would bleed over into other things, too.
Yeah, because I'd say like, a stormwater plan will probably start with the applicant engineers, probably stay there. I, you know, I might throw that back to, on the agrivoltaic plan, back to Ben, you know, I think it's one of those, like, I think we have yet to plan some of those things as to how that conversation would start, but.
Yeah, I don't, I guess I want to make sure I understand the question you're asking, maybe we should back up a step.
I guess it's, how much guidance do you want or need before you bring an agrivoltaic plan back to the public process, and how do you get that? Is there, is it sufficient to get that from staff, or is there other input that would be needed?
Thinking through that.
And we can hold that also.
Yeah, I don't know that I have a good answer for you yet. When it comes to the development of an agrivoltaics plan, here's how I would envision, is, we obviously work with, with owner-operator of the system to make sure that the plan's satisfying everything as is being constructed. I would work with my own staff to understand what a plan looks like and how you build milestones, and we would then go to the applicant, in this instance, or I guess it would be the owner-operator in this instance, to make sure it doesn't conflict with what they're trying to do on-site. The active process of coming back to you all, that's the piece that I'm, I'm not sure I have a great answer for yet.
Madam Chair, I have a question, I mean, one, this is a unique structure with the way we're doing today's meeting, and we wanted to give the applicant time. I don't want to give pressure that we have to have the right answer here today, we wanted to give some time between some of the questions we're asking today. I would just offer to Commissioner Willie's question, that it may be good to engage with some local partners, it may be good to have somewhat of a public process in developing that plan before you bring it back to us. I have an aspiration that while this may, at the time, cause some division in our community, there's an opportunity to bring people together in partnership and collaboration, and, and I think if we can do that early on in developing that plan, that may be really good.
Yeah, I, I appreciate that explanation, and it makes sense. Let us think about that a bit, thank you.
I pivot to a new topic unless you have more to say?
Go ahead.
Okay. All right. I wanted to talk about screening and buffering, and so I know we have, like, the, the visuals that were played out there in terms of screening or buffering for every single property, in the interest of disturbing as few soils as possible, will those be conversations with individual homeowners, because maybe they don't want that, maybe they would rather see further than see shrubs or something like that? I just don't want the assumption to be that we have to screen everything, because everybody will have a different opinion about it. So you wanna tackle that process?
Yeah, and I apologize, I don't have the exact condition in front of me, but there is a process laid out in the proposed conditions for consulting with the affected neighbors. The reason that there are three different designs of landscaping, which is a bit unique to this project, is that we did want to respect that not everybody wants to see conifers or, you know, your typical box store vegetation. So the, the other two alternatives are, one that is primarily wildlife habitat of native Kansas trees and shrubs, and the other is native grasses. Now, if the adjacent landowner did not want to see, or did not want to have any screening, then I think that that would be acceptable.
Is it vegetation only that's being offered, or is it also like a soil berm?
Soil berms were not contemplated, my understanding, in the development of the ordinances, that berms were a bit of a concern due to the soil disturbance.
So I imagine some homeowners might want that, so, but it certainly, it's, it's my preference not to, not to have it if people don't want it in particular, so.
Yeah, I'm not sure how that would work with the grading limit.
I think it's a good thing we can get back to you on.
Yeah, okay. Can you talk about the fencing? I'm afraid I can't locate it in here, what kind of fencing is being proposed?
The fencing that's being proposed is wildlife-friendly fencing, so it's woven wire with wood fencing posts. I can, at a later time, give you the exact sheet number of the detail in the proposed site plan.
Okay, that'd be great. There was a, you know, a request for putting the cab lines above ground as opposed to below ground, and I just don't feel like I know enough of the pros and cons of those two. It was mentioned as part of the agrivoltaic possibilities also, so I think that's something that I would like more information about, just as we'll be making a decision on, on that, on that variance.
Commissioner Willie, can I pull that thread just a little bit? Because that, that was the topic I was gonna jump to, I think, I mean, I'm interested to hear any immediate responses to this from staff or applicant, but in coming back for the 13th, I'd like to understand from the applicant, their perspective about the above-ground or underground, use some sort of sense of pros and cons to that, any concerns that you have, if the, if the reason for that is because our regulations limit grading, to just be clear about that, and any potential barriers to the agrivoltaics options that above-ground cab lines would present. So I'm interested to understand that more, I sort of have some presumptions about that, but there, but I'd like to understand it more if there are other projects that the applicant can sort of point to where above-ground cab lines have maybe, I guess I'm, I don't have a good sense of what's typical, and maybe there's a lot of variance based on a lot of different factors. And then Mary and Tanya, from staff's perspective, just to get a sense of what kind of conversation around that was, and what the, what staff's feeling is about the compromise, the benefits of it being above-ground versus trenched, if we're really concerned about the possible trenching and grading, or any other, like, potential wildlife concerns, just, I'm just curious to understand that a little bit more, because there's not too much about the cab lines here, and I, so on the 13th, I'd like to be more clear about that, if that was, so it's not really a question for right now, but I just wanted to articulate, those were some of the questions I'm having.
I guess I will have more questions, or you can come back with more information about the, the lay-down yard and the new substation, and maybe you can also just send me links so I can reread those portions, but I would just, I just have some questions about that. In particular, the new substation, there's an existing substation, new substation, for some reason, I was thinking it was an extension of the existing, but it's on its own site, so just curious, like, how much conversation we'll get to have about that, that is all wrapped into this application.
If you can clarify it now, you just, it's up to you.
Yeah, I might ask if Benjamin Gaskell could come in from the other room, I feel like he's gonna be able to provide a much more accurate and technical explanation.
And as he's approaching, just to be clear, the new substation, it's not technically, I wouldn't call it a substation, it's across the street, so there will be an electrical, but it's a collector substation, it's what we call it in the industry, and I'll let Benny go into more detail, make sure you hit the button.
Good evening, Commissioners, my name is Benjamin Gaskell, I'm a engineering manager at Savio. If you wouldn't mind, if you could please just repeat the question.
So we had questions about the substation, so it's a, it's a new build, but it's maybe not just like the substation that it's near, why is it different? Just what can you tell us about that? And it doesn't have to be all in this meeting, you can also get back to us with more information on the 13th, too.
Okay. So the existing Midland Junction substation is a transmission switchyard, so it's made to sort of bring in transmission lines and take out transmission lines, and, and so you just get power flowing in all directions. The substation that's being proposed in the application is what we would typically call a project collector substation, so it's collecting all of the power being generated by the plant, with different breakers to isolate different sections of the plant as needed. And then there's a single large power transformer where the voltage is being stepped up from the lower voltage being at the generator level, at the inverter level, up to the transmission level voltage. So then, you know, we can just pass it along, a transmission line across the street to the Midland Junction, where it can then be fed into the grid.
Thank you.
Before we go, we've got about 20 minutes left, and this is not the end of Commissioner questions, but I just wanted to say we got about 20 minutes left.
Can you just elaborate a little bit, so we keep talking about this being a proposed substation, and it's part of the, the project as though it, if the project is approved, it will be developed. Does the substation itself have other or different regulatory processes specific to just that, what that is? I'm seeing some no head nods, but, but verbally, if we could just hear, is there anything sort of unique or different? And I guess the point of that question being, and I, I assume since you were shaking your head no-bree, that there's nothing that, if this substation couldn't be built because of some other regulatory body that then would make the project itself sort of impossible, does that question make sense? I stumbled through.
Yeah, I understand your question, so, and to kind of put it into layman's terms, if the project does not get approved in the CUP, there will not be a substation. And if the project does get approved, there's no other regulatory body that approves a substation separately, it's not a part of the Southwest Power Pool grid, it is a part of the projects.
Got it, so that kind of clarified, it is specifically tied to the project and the plant, and therefore, there wouldn't be other possible energy projects, renewable or otherwise, that would be tied into that new substation? Okay, got it, thank you.
I'd like to ask that question a little different way, and probably to Mary. Mary, if the substation was not included in the project, right, and was come back at a later time, for example, would the regulations be any different for that new substation?
You're asking hypothetically, if it wasn't in the project now, but it came back later? It would be very similar to when I talked about the battery energy storage system, it's not in the project now, but it could come back later, and so as it comes back later, it would either require an amendment to the CUP, or some things can just be done with a site plan, and so it would come back to you either way, whichever way it's determined.
So let me ask my question again, would the regulations for that be any different than the regulations we have for this project?
Well, they would be different, because most of the regulations for this project address solar facilities, we don't have any regulations for substations, so they get developed all the time over the county with CUPs, and we develop standards for them individually. So if it came back all by itself, we would look at those other standards that we've used for other substations, we wouldn't go back to the solar facility and look at all these standards.
Okay.
I think Commissioner Kelly is asking, are there, are there any pieces that we would need to pull in to talk about the substation that we've missed so far, but.
Yeah, that's where I was headed, is, is that.
Are we missing any information, any other regulations that we should have talked about the substation?
Yes.
I think that's the question, and it does not have to be answered now, either.
Yeah, we've done CUPs or substation, I can go back and, and review and just make sure, mostly we look at the visual impact, and how tall is the substation, what do the people in the neighborhood think of the substation? Normally, it's a required utility, and most people are happy to have them, so we don't get a lot of issues, but I can look at that for next time and just see what our traditional standards or requirements are for substations.
Maybe I'll head us in a little different direction. There's a lot of new conditions or revised or conditions in this, and one of them is a lot of third-party engagement, and I'd be interested, I, I, I think I understand in a couple of conversations with staff, that it is about workload, is there, what concerns might we have about that much third-party? Have we done this much third-party before? Is there, is there any reservations about this much third-party engagement on this?
Tanya Voight, zoning and codes director, this would be, you know, in 20 years that I've been a zoning codes director, would be unprecedented in comparison to third-party reviews for other things. We do have some examples where we do use third parties, soil testing, groundwater monitoring, testing for rock quarries, we do send off a lead report at the Fraternal Order of Police conditional use permit, that we have that reviewed by a third party. Mostly, that's in relationship to not just workload capacity, but the technical expertise that's needed for that subject matter, so that's a component of it. At one point, we had discussed, does zoning and codes just need another position? But if you added a position to the office, we most likely will not get someone who has an understanding and expertise in all these different areas, so that's why we're asking for third parties. And that would be if we don't have the capacity, we, we do want to work with the applicant, we prefer to do our own work, to be honest, but we do recognize that there is a staff capacity issue there.
And all of those third-party costs are covered by the applicant, is that correct?
That's correct.
And Tanya, I don't want you to betray the third parties that you work with now, but how are those, are you confident in those relationships and the county's ability to manage those relationships with third-party? You get what you want out of them?
It takes work.
Yeah.
To get what you want out of a third-party, it takes work to create clear expectations of what your expectations are, so it's not just a pass it off and someone's gonna give you everything you need, but it definitely, those, as long as we're using people that are subject matter experts in that field, whether it's glare or groundwater monitoring. in that field, whether it's glare or groundwater monitoring, you know, our goal is to use parties that are trusted in our community.
Thanks.
I would add just in, you know, agreed, this is a substantial amount of third-party review and consultation that we're going to need. We do do that in other places in the county, you know, as the Commissioners are familiar. We've used, you know, owners' representatives for construction projects, you know, to help us work between contractors and architects. You know, we've, we do bring consultant, we bring consultants in to help, you know, navigate our open space plan. So, you know, we do do it on a variety of different levels. And so I do think this will be key, that we develop a strong relationship with this firm to, that really has the range of expertise that we're going to need to manage the project. Manage the project for us, really, is what this is, is to provide us with the information we need to stay on top of it.
It's okay if I switch topics? All right. It was mentioned that there'll be a buffer for wetlands. Is that considered, is that a setback of a particular distance, or is that a constructed berm? Like, what does that buffer look like from the wetlands?
A 50-foot buffer is required. It's just a non-disturbed area. There wouldn't be berms built or anything. It would just be a non-disturbed area.
Just like a vegetated setback?
Right.
Okay, thanks.
Well, and also during construction, I think Benny could back me up here, but I believe there's two rows of silt fencing adjacent to those wetlands.
Since we're on the topic of wetlands, I'm going to move us to wildlife corridors. I don't know if you have an expert in the back room on wildlife corridors. There was a lot of discussion at the Planning Commission about deer. And it looks to me, as I look on the map and I look at your wetlands map, and you compare it to your wildlife corridors, that they are along that wild, that corridor runs right along that wetland identified area. Is it safe to say, and I don't really know who to ask this question to, is it safe to say that wildlife is probably traveling along that corridor now because it's a wetland corridor? Or is, is, are deer running all over the place in North Lawrence, and now we're going to funnel them, as I heard at the Planning Court Commission, to this one corridor?
Commissioner, I might actually cover some conversations that happened with the regs, a lot about wildlife corridors and wildlife and deer, and frankly, conversations with the Kansas Department of Wildlife and Parks, they were not concerned about deer. They, we've got plenty of deer, not worried about it. It's like, well, well, we might be, so we might still have some conversations there. But I think that the general discussion was that preserving the corridors they're already using is probably going to happen kind of naturally as the project gets put together. And then having maybe some additional corridors or something on floodplain-type areas, because there aren't as many natural breaks, there aren't treed ravines, or hedgerows, or, you know, really much in the way that breaks up that, that setting that's useful for wildlife. So I don't know if that was helpful at all, but you can take and run with it.
Yeah, I might just speak briefly to how those wildlife corridors were designed, if you will. So as part of our initial due diligence with the project for engineering, we run hydrological, well, a consultant runs a hydrology study to determine areas that may be prone to inundation. You know, there's areas within this project site where there is varying levels of water inundation during significant storm events. And in those areas, we did not put any panels. Now, typically, with a project like this, you know, it, there's less fencing required if you just connect a full block. But with the preference for wildlife corridors, what we did is we elected that those areas that are prone to inundation would be, would split those blocks. So there wouldn't be any panels there, from an engineering perspective. But it also provides an inherent wildlife value in the availability of water. And the species that, the species mixes that were selected for those areas were designed to be water-friendly plants, if you will.
Ready for another? Is there a plan for, well, there needs to be because it's part of the regulations, for training for first responders? So I know there's a first responder plan in there, a hazard plan, but have there been conversations yet? Because this particular site falls under Lawrence Douglas County Fire Medical, conversations with what they might need, what you might need, and how that training would go about? Because I think in the regs, it's, training has to be offered at least once a year or two. I don't know if it's just the first responder organization for that area, or if it was county-wide?
Yeah, so I'll take this really quick. We do not currently have a plan. We have met with Chief Luellen, and we know that we will need a plan, but at this point, it's a part of the regulations. We will create it, but not at this time.
Mary, is that something that we need to have captured as conditions, or do you feel confident that's happening?
And it is condition U.
Got it. Thank you. So I know one of the things we were not able to regulate was pesticide use, because the state of Kansas doesn't allow it, other than saying it has to be a certified pesticide applicator. But that's something that keeps coming up with the conversations. Now, I feel pretty confident, anything that comes out of conventional agriculture and goes into any kind of permanent vegetation, the use of pesticides is considerably lower. But there's been some conversation in the community about that utilities have access to some kind of mega pesticides or something like that, that is, you know, a different. And I just wanted you to get a chance to respond or address that pesticide use, and maybe even to talk specifically around if those are cab lines are above ground, is that something that gets treated with an herbicide to keep grasses down there, or if that can still be mechanically managed?
Benny, I don't know if you can speak to the mechanical versus herbicide treatment, vegetation management treatment?
Yep. So the cab system allows the cables to sit above the ground, you know, 12 inches, 18 inches, so you can mechanically trim the grass underneath the cables.
And I know that, you know, Douglas County does have a noxious weed department that will be instrumental in developing a more detailed vegetation management plan that is a condition of approval. Obviously, there are different weed pressures that this facility will experience, and the exact herbicides that would be needed, if at all, will be specific to those species. The vegetation management plan that's in the application does call for spot spraying for noxious and invasive weeds. And I think that that is something that was also contemplated during the ordinance development, the difficulty there of balancing the need to control for those invasive species while also trying to use the minimal amount of application.
And the packet it talked about, in the vegetation management, it talked about hand mowing. Can you talk a little bit, how extensive do you think that is in spaces, maybe underneath the panels, or that you'll need to do hand mowing?
I believe that's referring to, like, using a trimmer.
Mm-hmm. And you think that'll be a lot? What's your experience with that?
Yeah, around the piles, and around sensitive electronic equipment or cable transitions from below ground to above ground. Those are areas where you would use a hand trimmer.
I'm very glad to see the clarification included about that all the piles get removed completely, and that was an assumption after conversations with companies, et cetera. But I'm glad for it to be very, very explicitly spelled out. That was something that was of concern in the community, and just making sure that we have a shared understanding of that. So I was glad to see it there. Between the packet that came to the Planning Commission and the packet that is coming here at that supplemental, there was an awful lot about groundwater analysis and testing wells, et cetera, that I, from my own soils analysis and my talks with the Kansas Geological Survey, I don't see the need for it. I, I think that's something that many Commissioners will need to weigh in on also. But I'm just curious about how much of that is just in response to conversation that happened versus necessarily kind of a scientific background? Is that, is it done in soil, in solar installations? I've not heard of it.
If I could speak to that, that was my omission in the standards that I put in the staff report, because we have very few changes between the limited scale and the commercial scale. One of them is that limited scale does not have to do that original groundwater testing, but you do have to do it in commercial scale. So I had left that off of the standards. So it looks like a brand-new condition, but I'm just putting it in. It is in the standards, and it was, it was just offered, we do it with quarries, and anyone within a quarter mile, you do the groundwater testing, just to give them a baseline of what it is now. And then we don't do any further monitoring. And I think there was some confusion at the Planning Commission, because on that same night, there was zinc groundwater monitoring being discussed. So during their discussion, it did get a little confusing with whether they wanted us to do ongoing monitoring for zinc, but the only one that was included in the standards was what's in our regulations, just that original groundwater test.
And I very much approve of that. Definitely want to see, you know, that offered to landowners if they want their wells tested, in part because we as Kansans have no idea what is in our groundwater, and that is something that is a bigger problem than all of this, that I'd like to see us get into, both with the state and at the county level. And so a baseline for everybody of what is in our groundwater. We know from testing that's being done in other parts of the state, just kind of slowly and being rolled out recently, that in agricultural areas, we have a lot of contaminants that are hitting our groundwater. So definitely glad to see that included for existing wells. But what I was seeing in here was wells drilled for the purpose of groundwater testing in like all of the parcels of, of the project, and that, that seemed very new. Can anybody talk about where that came from? And?
Yeah, I can speak to that.
Pick it up? Okay.
So both through the proposed tax amendment and then conversations with stakeholders, there was a concern over groundwater contamination. We, in our review and in, or the review of our consultant, Burns and McDonald, as summarized in the zinc white paper that's included in the, in the supplemental packet, do not see that to be a concern. But to avoid, you know, any, any further concern, we're offering to do groundwater monitoring to alleviate that concern. I think there's also an additional potential benefit of, as you mentioned, identifying what's currently in the groundwater. I think there's also opportunity to discuss identifying, you know, the specific soil conditions, you know, as it relates to soil organic matter, things that are going to be relevant to the agricultural takes, success in the vegetation management, success of the project. That's getting more into the soil sampling plan, but yeah.
And it just seems a little odd, we've, we've made sure that we're removing all of our piles, but we've then put, you know, sunk wells into all, you know, all across the project area. And when those are timed out and decommissioned, then we'll be, you know, filling them and cutting them off at, you know, below ground level, et cetera. Like, it just seems like we've kind of traded one thing for another, unless we have, unless we have something specific that we're looking for and hoping to get. Now, as far as like learning about our groundwater overall, I'm game for that. I've just, I just wanted to know. And that may be something that, as we kind of hear from the public and also talk amongst ourselves, that we may have some other thoughts about. Go ahead.
And could I ask you, is that in the conditions, or was that in the applicant's supplemental information? Because I don't remember a condition about ongoing water testing.
It's in the applicant supplemental.
So it's not a condition?
I've not connected those dots, so I can't say for sure, but probably, if you haven't found it there, then probably not. But it is, there's a lot of reports about it in the supplemental materials.
Okay, thanks.
I've been hogging the mic, and we are getting close to time, so I'm going to, sorry.
No, it's okay. We're about at time. I just want to drop two questions for, to come back with. We, today, we had something in our packet from Evergy, an integrated resource plan update, but we didn't hear about that today. So I would like a little bit of presentation or elaboration on that, and how this project fits into the, the larger resource plan for Evergy, and what that, that means and the implications of it. So I'd like to hear some about that next time. And then, Mary, if, I don't know how to ask this question exactly, but I'm interested in further understanding staff's perspective about this land use not being a conversion of agricultural land, but in addition to agricultural land? I just, I want to explore that more and understand from staff's perspective, sort of like, what are the standards and criteria around determining when something gets to a threshold of conversion? What are the activities or the sort of telltale signs that make something go from ag land to conversion towards? I think that's something that lots of folks in the public are grappling with and sort of conceptualizing. And then especially when we put that side by side with the taxation conversation, and if it were to be, you know, if, if there's a conversion to different taxation, what, I just want to unpack that a little bit more and understand, specifically within staff's review criteria, what does equal conversion versus just addition to the land? Does that make sense, Mary and Tanya? Just what?
It does. And it's, planning looks at land use differently than the appraiser. So a lot of times, the appraiser will say, that's commercial, and in our mind, it's multifamily residential. So I think there's a lot of disconnect between how we.
Understood. Which, and I know that's kind of, you know, those are some like puddles to jump in, maybe, but I, I think it's important because both things are relevant here, and to talk about some of those distinctions and how they are defined differently in different spaces.
If I can just bounce off that a little more for next time, I have three things I don't need answered right now, but things to think about, is I'd like to have a little bit of discussion next time about the difference between a CUP and zoning, and why that decision was made as we continue to layer on more and more and more and more conditions. I'd just like to hear staff sort of talk about that process and how we got there. For the applicant, I'm interested in the total number of acres that are not included, that are included in the project but are not, do not have panels on them, but are on, but have prime soils, and how big those areas are. That may have been in the packet, but I'm really interested in, there's a lot of, if you look at your map, there's a lot of white, right, that doesn't have panels on it, but it is under prime soils. And I'm interested how large those areas of land are. I think in the application, it talks about that the landowner who's leasing the land has the right to farm that land if they choose to. And I'm just interested how big those are. What's that total area? And then the last one for Ben, because I know we're at time here, is Ben, I'm interested in understanding in your organization's work, how, how often are you working with historically underrepresented groups in agriculture? You know, what's your track record with that? And just to make sure that we're, yeah, I'm just interested.
Two final ones for me then. Mary, as you're looking into, you know, what constitutes that transition from ag and getting back to ag, whether or not those acres will still be reported to the FSA as grasslands? That's a question I would have, because that, just like CRP would be, you, you report those acres, and then when you turn back to agriculture or do a different kind of agriculture, then that record is maintained. And the other would be for Ben, and that is, is 100,000 enough for an agrivoltaic plan? So I'll let you stew on that and get back to us with a question, with an answer. Commissioners, do we have anything else? I know we will have yet a very full discussion and new questions even that come up on the 13th. So Sarah?
Yeah, I just, thank you Commissioners for wrapping up. And I do want to sort of just clarify some things with the table while we've got it here. So I have proposed, because this is going to be a weird agenda packet, because normally we have agendas on Wednesdays, and this will be a Saturday. So my proposal is that we would publish this packet on April 10th at noon, which means I would need some middles back from staff and the applicant, no later than the 9th at noon. If we can get it in ahead of time, we will, and we will publish it in advance of that. But is, that really only, so I would anticipate there'll be information in the packet, there'll also be updated public comment, written public comment that is received between when we published the packet last Thursday and.
when we published the packet last Thursday and that date in that packet. But we will start the meeting on the 13th, after we do call it to order and have Terrell say a few things. We will start by reviewing that information from both the staff and the applicant before we get into public comment. So you'll have additional opportunities to present. Does that work for the Commission?
Yes, and I think especially getting that to the public, that public comment is, we'll get into the packet if we can get it before the 9th. I know I have some things that we'll need to get out to the, to the public packet also.
And, and we're going to try to update pub, written public comment in the packet through the end of business on Thursday, April 11th.
Okay.
But I just want to warn members of the public, that gives the Commission, like, 24 hours to review your information before they meet, so, with already busy agendas. So the sooner we can get written public comment in, the better.
If there is nothing else, it'd be nice to recess for seven minutes before we start a regular business meeting at 5:30. So thank you, everyone.
Thank you.